I'd like to call the City Council meeting. You're welcome. Good to see everybody here, the 40 members of the public. It's nice to see everybody out. I'd like to remind everybody to please silence and turn off your electronic devices. If you would, please stand at the invocation of the flag.
Dear God, we meet and bow our heads and ask for your peace and understanding during these challenging times. Let us remember that each and every life is precious and each life is a gift from you. Let us work together to solve problems and move forward as a peaceful, healthy, and law-abiding community. We especially ask you to protect our police officers, first responders, and city workers, each of whom have families of their own. They are working to assist others while trying to keep themselves and their families safe. We ask that you keep them protected as they perform their duties. Be with all our citizens as they try to find stability in these turbulent times. Help us all to find common ground amidst our differences and common purpose in our goals. Keep us safe and healthy through the worldwide pandemic. This we ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Blood allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Wardrobe malfunction. So first on the agenda is recognitions and proclamations, and the first item is a certificate of appreciation to M&amp;B Products for Farm Night BBQ. So I'll ask, I don't see Dale. Is Dale not coming tonight? So Andrea McClellan, if you'd come to the podium, please. Brian, we have a bad echo in here for some reason. Welcome Andrea. Good to see you. So I have a certificate of appreciation from the entire City Council, and it's presented to M&amp;B Products, which is Dale and Andrea McClellan and the family. And it reads, "An appreciation of Dale McClellan and Andrea McClellan's outstanding efforts in organizing and hosting the fifth annual Farm Night BBQ. Proceeds from the event will be used to support Focus Academy and the city's youth recreation programs. Farm Night BBQ is a huge event that would not be possible without the assistance of Dale and Andrea." It's more than assistance, they do the whole thing. "The city appreciates the energy and commitment that Dale and Andrea put into making Farm Night BBQ a success year after year, and this is awarded the seventh day of July 2020, and it's signed by myself and all the members of the City Councils." Thank you Andrea. Would you like to say a few words?
I will, if you don't mind.
I don't mind at all.
Well, you know, I want to direct your memories back a few months to a blistery cold night that we probably still haven't thawed out from, back when life was a little bit more normal and everyone was able to come together as a community and focus on bettering our community. And we did that on February 21st, 2020 at M&amp;B Products. We had about 800 community members come out and support Farm Night BBQ, and we were able to raise $10,000, which we split evenly between leisure services, Temple Terrace Leisure Services, and the Focus Academy. So I would like to present them, if you don't mind. I'd like to call up Cory Collins.
Please do.
And Josephine. I'd like to present them, if you don't mind.
Not at all, please do.
So you guys already have the real deal?
Yes.
Because this was supposed to happen back in March. But you guys do, we are so thankful to be able to support your ventures. You guys both have wonderful, wonderful. Programs. Thank you. And we're just happy to have been a part of it. Farm Night BBQ, this is the fifth year we've been successful, fortunately, over the year. I'm thankful we were able to have it this year and to be able to give back to our community. And it wouldn't be for the support of all the rest of our community members coming out, having a good time, listening to some music, eating some barbecue, and all the while all be going to a great cause. So we're happy to do it. Hopefully we can do it again. Hopefully we can give back to normal. And thank you guys for helping Cory. I have to give a special thank you to you who was there right by my side every time, took a huge, huge burden off me and was able to help. And it was a great event. So thank you all very, very much.
Well, thank you.
Come on down, Mr. Ross. Get in there. Did y'all smile?
Yeah, I did.
Got the smile eyes?
Next on the agenda is a certificate of recognition for Sean Lloyd, along for his longtime service on the code enforcement board, but I think we'll table that because Mr. Lloyd couldn't be with us tonight. So we'll hopefully get him here at the next meeting and present it to him there. The next item is a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. Leisure Services Director Carl Langfeld would like to approach the podium. It's the proclamation of the City of Temple Terrace. It says, "Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, and our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas, Parks and Recreation provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. Parks and Recreation Programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas, Parks and Recreation are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and our park and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors." And one more whereas. Whereas, the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. Temple Terrace recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation Resources. Now therefore I, Andy Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the acting mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
You Carl, would you like to say a few words?
I would, just a few. This has been a very interesting and unprecedented period of time for everybody, and Parks and Recreation has been impacted by this tremendously. I have been in frequent contact with my peers around the region and around the state on how all of us are managing to continue to provide services to our communities. And one of the things that we have found that reinforced what we thought prior is Parks and Recreation is an essential service. The things that we provide to this community are essential to the community. Children are just now coming back to summer camp. They will be going back to school in August, per statements I've been hearing out of the governor's office. But summer camp was the first time that children have found themselves in an institutional-type setting since this started. They hadn't seen social distancing. They didn't know what that would mean to them when they were in a room with their peers. And it has been up to us to show them this and to teach them what social distancing means and how they need to conduct themselves in this new normal that we find ourselves in now. I can't say enough great things about the staff that I have and the leadership that they have shown as we've been going forth with doing this. We will continue to provide services, whatever they may be, as we go forward. I am looking forward to the day that we can bring our senior programming back. The seniors are the most at-risk group for COVID-19, and I believe also the most greatly impacted by being kept out of the services that we provide. When we had to close down Lightfoot, we are not providing the service of community and socialization that the seniors so desperately need. And I look forward to the day that we can get them back. Parks and Recreation truly is essential to this community, and bringing it back full force is a day that I am looking forward to. And thank you very much.
And we are too. Thank you Carl. I'm going to invite your predecessor to join me down there. Okay, and the next item on the agenda are board appointments. The first item is the Hillsborough County Building Board of Adjustment, Appeals, and Examiners appointment. There's one vacancy on the Hillsborough County Building Board of Adjustment, Appeals, and Examiners. The city received one application from Michael.
McInnany?
McInnany, thank you. That's what I was struggling with. I don't see Mr. McInnany here. So is there a motion to approve the appointment of Michael McInnany as an alternate member of the Hillsborough County Building Board of Adjustment, Appeals, and Examiners for a term extending until July 7th, 2024? A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Very good. Next item is consideration of the minutes from the previous meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
I made to approve.
We have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Chambers. Any discussion or corrections on the minutes? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? The motion, or the minutes are approved. Next item, persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. There will be a three-minute time limit imposed on all public comment for each speaker. We ask that speakers come to the podium, state your name and city of residence. I want to assure everybody that during public comment, the city manager and the directors in attendance do make note of these items. Your comments are taken seriously and will be followed up on. So do we have any public comment requests to speak? Is there anybody that wishes to address anything that's not an agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. The next item is communications and petitions. We have none. The next item after that is consent and agenda. We have none. We move into public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. The first item is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance 1494, providing for the partial vacation and dedication of easements at 186 and 202 Sunnyside Road. Open the public hearing. Deputy Director of Public Works and Utilities Nathan Hale will explain. Welcome Nate. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Mayor and council, Nathan Hale, Deputy Director of Utilities, here for the second reading of the ordinance calling for partial vacation and establishment of easement for 186 and 202 Sunnyside Road. The details of this were discussed at the June 16th meeting, and I stand for any further questions.
Very good. Prior to questions, is there any public comment? Does anybody like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped a step. Council members, do you have any questions? Any questions of Mr. Hale? Okay. Now I'll close the public hearing and ask the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance, please.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the partial vacation and dedication of easements along and behind the residence, having a street address of 186 and 202 Sunnyside Road, providing for conditions of vacation, providing for recordation, providing for an effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Very good. If the ordinance is acceptable, we'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1494.
I need to approve adoption of ordinance.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? The ordinance passes. Next item, thank you, Mr. Hale. Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving the purchase of 50 WatchGuard Vista Wi-Fi Body Warn camera systems. Police Captain Jacob Carlyle will explain. Good evening, Captain.
Good evening, sir. Mayor Ross, members of the City Council, Jacob Carlyle, Captain, Temple Terrace Police Department, here to discuss, as he said, the purchase of 50 body worn WatchGuard 4RE Vista HD Wi-Fi Body Cameras. It is recommended the city adopt a resolution approving this purchase for these systems. The Temple Terrace Police Department initially deployed our first body worn cameras in 2015. Because the technology was relatively new and still rapidly evolving, the body worn cameras that would fully integrate with our existing WatchGuard 4RE HD vehicle camera platform was still under development and therefore unavailable to us. The technology supporting our existing body worn cameras is outdated, requires an inordinate amount of administrative time to properly administer, and has never integrated with our existing WatchGuard 4RE in-car cameras. The proposed WatchGuard body worn cameras are fully supported by our current WatchGuard Wireless Transfer and Evidence Management System. It has proposed the purchase of 50 WatchGuard body worn cameras with the requirements of the Florida Contraband Forfeiture Act, and upon receiving council approval, we will be made from WatchGuard a sole source vendor from Allen, Texas. Payment of $106,510 for the aforementioned WatchGuard body worn cameras, which includes shipping from Texas, will be made from the account utilizing forfeiture dollars currently held in Special Law Enforcement Trust Fund located within the restricted funds account. I stand for questioning.
Very good. Prior to questions, is there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, questions?
I want to make sure the public understands that these are being paid for because they were not part of our budget last year.
Yes, ma'am.
And as we look to put them in the budget next year, we realized that you had the funds already available, and we went ahead and took advantage of it rather than wait for October for this to happen. So I think that's a sentence that I'd like for everyone to recognize that says that that money is coming from and utilizing the forfeiture dollars currently held in the account.
Okay. Are there questions for Captain Carlyle? I do have a question, Captain. What is our authorized strength for sworn officers currently? Our authorized strength, how many positions do we have authorized?
Currently staffed or on the books?
I'm sorry?
Currently staffed or on the books?
Well, both. That was going to be my next question. How many officers do we currently have and how many are authorized?
I'd have to refer to Chief Albano for that question.
If you know, I didn't, it wasn't meant to be a gotcha. If you don't know, that's fine.
We have, Mayor Ross, we have 47 currently hired, 53 is our sworn complement, if we were fully staffed.
We have 47 currently were authorized, 53. Do you need to get 53?
I need more than 53, quite frankly, but I definitely need to get, oh, you mean cameras?
Yeah.
No, because, trick question.
Let's stick with the easy part first.
No, no, because, because myself, Deputy Chief and the captains won't be wearing these body worn cameras, so we're in good shape with the 50 that we've asked to purchase.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Sorry, Captain, I didn't mean to put you on the spot there with that, but.
No, sir.
Any other questions of Captain Carlyle? Okay. If acceptable then, I'll entertain a motion approving the purchase of 50 WatchGuard Vista Wi-Fi Body Warn camera systems. Is there, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Okay, the resolution passes. The next item on the agenda is related. It's a resolution approving the purchase of a WatchGuard Evidence Library 4 web software and the court of licensing agreement to go with this. And Captain, you're going to explain again?
Mayor, members of the City Council again. Thank you for your time. It is recommended the City Council adopt a resolution approving the purchase of WatchGuard Evidence Library 4 web software, support and licensing for a three-year agreement for the 50 WatchGuard cameras. Software support and licensing agreements are necessary components of the police department's successful deployment of the WatchGuard Vista Body Cam program. The purchase of the Evidence Library 4 program and software, support and licensing under the proposed three-year agreement, will ensure annual cost of 7,500 a year for the next three years. Upon receiving council approval, the purchase will be made from WatchGuard, a sole source vendor from Allen, Texas. Again, payment for the aforementioned three-year support, software, and licensing agreement in the amount of $22,500 will be made from the account listed in the resolution. I'll stand for questioning.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, questions for the captain? Questions for Captain Carlyle? Very good. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion approving the purchase of WatchGuard Evidence Library 4 web software. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays? The motion passes. Thank you very much, Captain.
Good evening.
Is there any carryover business from previous council meetings? Any carryover business? Seeing none, new business in board reports. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no.
Yes, new business, okay.
That's all right.
The first item on the, you want to go before the first item on the new business? You can.
Just the board report. Why don't I get mine out of the way?
Okay, Mr. Sisler.
I just wanted to give council an update on the status of the funding and circumstances regarding the irrigation project with the club. We did meet with the club today for the SAC, which is the advisory committee, and POs have been cut. The club's funding is secured, in place, and in the bank, and been verified through account review, which is a good thing. Construction is scheduled to start around the second or third week, around the middle of August, okay, sometime in that timeframe. We're going to do one hole a day, I want to say one hole a week, and they should just, they're going to probably start on hole number three, and they should be done towards the end of November, maybe early December, depending upon any weather issues. But they're psyched, they're stoked, everything's good, and it's moving forward. And there's some, you know, some good things happening with the club, that they're getting some capital projects done, and the irrigation's going to be a big one, I think, and it's going to carry the club for many, many, many years. So I think it's, I think it's good, and I just want to give an update to the, to the council as to where it is, and we'll follow, we'll follow up as things develop and progress.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sisler. Thank you. That's good news. Next item under new business is discussion regarding the COVID-19 Property Tax Relief Task Force. So for your edification for the public watching, we received a letter from the county tax collector, Enriquez, notifying us that he is standing up, he's forming a task force to discuss possible scenarios whereby local governments offer some relief to businesses during the time that they were closed down due to COVID-19. That's a discussion. There's been no, nothing's occurred yet. He's just asked, he's invited the mayors of all three cities, as well as selected county officials to join him on this task force. I agreed to do that because they're going to have the task force whether we go or not, so I thought it was smart for us to do that. The letter did not give me the flexibility to send a designee. I was hoping that it would, but the way the letter is drafted, it's, it's only asked for the mayors. So I will serve on this. I don't know when the first meeting will be, but I certainly would solicit all input as this process moves forward. I don't know what the ideas that will be floated, I don't know yet. So, so any input that you might have on this, if you would get it to Mr. Stevenson. Mr. Stevenson and I have talked. I intend to meet with him and our finance director to find out exactly what scenarios, what impact that would have on us. So very early on, I just didn't, I wanted to make sure that you were informed as I'm informed. So if there are any objections or concerns about this, I'm assuming you would prefer that I participate. Okay. The, another item, if I can go make an item A2 here before we go to B, is I have another invitation to participate in something else, and this one did give me the flexibility to ask a designee, and I intend to do that now. And this is, we've been invited by the Board of County Commissioners, who has approved for the cities to send representatives, elected officials, representatives to serve on the Board of Directors for Career Source of Tampa Bay. And they passed this at a recent BOCC meeting. I think it's a very good move that the county is trying to be inclusive of the municipalities, and I don't want to spring this on you, Mr. Sisler, but I was hoping that you would agree to serve on this board. The meetings are bimonthly, it's only every other month on the third Thursday from 11:00 to 12:30, so every other month. Would you be willing to do that? Do I need to put this to a vote, Mr. Song?
I don't know what the letter specifically said. I didn't know if it's going to just be a designation like you would normally make to say the, you pick your representatives on the, for Riverwatch Task Force, or, you know, if it's like that, then you could just make your designation.
The letter invited me or the person, elected official of my choosing, as long as they're willing, to serve on the Board of Directors.
I think that you can, I believe you can just go ahead and make your choice.
Okay. Are there, well, I will ask, are there any objections to this? I mean, if there are, if you don't like Mr. Sisler doing, okay, very good. And I will forward you, I have more information, I'll forward you the email and get you connected with the person. Okay, very good. The next item, thank you, by the way, appreciate that.
My pleasure.
The next item is the Arts Council recognition of the Fourth of July Decorating Contest Winners, and I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Chambers.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a very, very good participation for the first ever Decorate Your Home/Property/Business Fourth of July Contest. We had three businesses entered, and the winner of that is Mission Hill Church. Where's the TV camera? Oh, there it is. Okay. Mission Hill Church. And they got a gift certificate from Office Dynamics. The light-up the night had eight homes entered, and that went to Ms. Kimberly Longfellow. Her property was 1530 North River Hills Drive, and it was very well done. And then seize the day, the daytime entries, we had 23 homes participate in that category, and the winner of that is Ms. Paula Venus. She was on Grandview Drive and had a very nice. She was on Grandview Drive and had a very nice big Uncle Sam out in the yard with some other stuff, and it was interactive also. Want to thank them. We had six judges representing the Arts Council, Council, the Garden Club, the Rotary Club, Women's Club, Junior Women's Club, and one at-large couple judged also, so I want to thank them. And it was very well attended. I hope people drove around and saw them. I did, and I hope people got a good, good vibe from that because it was very well done.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chambers, and I got a lot of good feedback from that, and my family did drive around and look at them. And just again, I'd like to thank the Arts Council, Mr. Chambers, Ms. Nonihue, for all the work that you've been doing during this crisis. It's been greatly appreciated by the city, so. Is there new, other new business or board reports? Okay, very good. If not, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just really a couple of quick updates here as we prepare to come back into our second budget meeting on July 27th and July 30th. We are going to have the necessity to call a special meeting in order to set tentative millage. What I would propose is that we do that after our second budget meeting, which is on Capitol, which really doesn't affect Ad Valorem anyway, but certainly the, the meeting that we have on the 27th will set general fund from direction that we give, get from, from council. But there is a, a time crunch. Again, it's just a timing issue that we have this special meeting. We can't do it on our first meeting in our, in August because that is the day that it is due to the property appraiser. So we're looking to propose, and we'll send out an email and make sure that everybody understands what's going on, and certainly set this up in, in our website and everything else so that the public knows. But there will be, we're going to try to call the special meeting on the 30th at 12:00 noon. Figured we can run through the Capitol program and then have a very quick meeting, and we'll just set tentative millage. So also to remind you that one of the things that we're looking at timing was, is our first meeting in September, which is the first adoption meeting of our budget, will be, need to be moved until the 3rd. I think pretty much everyone was in agreement to move it to the 3rd, which is a Thursday instead. Again, that is a timing issue that we just have. We can't have it any sooner than the 3rd because of timing between the trim notice and our first adoption meeting. Also taking into account that we have restrictions to have our budget adoption meeting at same time that the county does and the school board does, so on and so forth. So the 3rd will work, and again, just to kind of remind everybody, we're looking at September 3rd. September 3rd. Yes, sir. Instead, instead of September 1st, which is a Tuesday, which would be our first regular meeting, which is what we try to do, is have it on our regular meetings rather than having a special meeting, we're looking at just moving the whole meeting back until the 3rd. Rather than having a special me, or a regular meeting on the 1st, a special meeting on the 3rd, if we can move the meeting all the way back, not all the way back, but to the 3rd instead of the 1st, that will work out better. So we'll be kind of getting that, that together, but those are two dates that I think council needs to understand and, and know about, so.
Okay. You said you're going to put those into an email so we can put them on our account?
Yes, we will. We'll make sure that everybody gets ample notice, and certainly we've got advertising requirements that we have to meet as well, so we'll make sure we, we coordinate all that. So that's all I have.
That's all you have?
Yeah.
Okay. City Attorney's report?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Nothing to report?
Nothing.
Well, no news from your attorney is usually a good news. Council Chair's comments? I don't really have anything to report unless you have any questions of me regarding COVID-19 stuff. Go ahead, Mr. Chambers.
Sorry, I, there was a section of my notes that were hidden in the mask fog up on my glasses on, on that, but I also wanted to thank the City of Temple Terrace on the, doing the flyers. Thank you, Lori. Also the publicity that was done for the Fourth of July Contest, thank you. Also thank you, the city and Leisure Services Department. Some of the prizes were memberships to the rec center. Carl's already gone. Also the Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club, they provided certificates for some lunches for the winners. So I wanted to get those thank you's in.
Very good.
That was it.
Thank you. Anything else, any other business to come before the council? Any other business to come before the council? If not, we'll stand adjourned.